Okay, I'd like to call to order the December 5th, 2016 meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simarusti?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Here.
Ms. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJESA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss a confidential personnel matter, HPAA contract negotiations, litigation regarding secretary settlement agreements, and student discipline. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJESA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
And get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Convene to regular session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just.
Okay, so the only thing we have on our agenda in terms of communications is one email from Randy Solomon regarding denying the right to recess to students as a punishment. Do we have anything else, Linda?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, number eight on the agenda, the minutes, there's a correction to the minutes for the regular session, February 22nd, 2016, finance and facilities item number 19. Total contract amount should be $545,500. And then we also have the regular public and executive session minutes from November 14th, 2016, with no corrections. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about any of those minutes? You? Okay. So we will move on to the student representative report. Hello there.
Hi. Okay, start with Irving. So Irving recently held its centennial open house this past November, on November 20th. And then Irving School held its Spirit Day and its celebration on the 22nd because it was also the 50th day of school. At Bartle, Bartle will be holding its Bartle Epic Game Day tomorrow, December 6th, in the Bartle Media Center. At the middle school, the middle school will be holding its Fall Sports Awards from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the cafeteria tomorrow. And on Thursday, December 15th, the middle school will be having its band and choir concert from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. So yeah, tomorrow's gonna be a busy day. At the high school, from December 1st to December 4th, the high school Model UN team participated in Rutgers Model UN, and they had a wonderful time learning about international issues and how to go about addressing humanitarian problems and issues. The high school will also be having its band concert tomorrow, December 6th, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the auditorium. And then the orchestra concert is the following day, December 7th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. And then the choir concert will be held on December 21st, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And admission to all, three of those are free, so I really encourage everyone to go. So yeah.
Great. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Oh, okay. Also, I recently applied for a grant to the Bezos Foundation, and the Bezos family is also the family in charge of Amazon, like they're the creators of Amazon and everything. And we got the grant approved. It's for a project called Rethink HP, which was started, I think it was three years ago? It was my freshman year, and it was sort of a night of panels where you invited a couple of different speakers from different backgrounds to talk about social issues like race and sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, and things like that. And so, we're really excited to be starting it back up again, and I'm really glad that the grant got approved.
Great. That's fantastic. Thank you. I went to that a few years ago. It was fabulous. I look forward to going again.
I did too. It was wonderful. I'm so happy it's back.
Looking forward to it.
Great. Okay, so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
I'd like to update the board and the community on progress we're making towards achieving the goals and the strategic plan. I've been spending some time talking about the first focus area, which has to do with promoting educational equity and social emotional skills. I'm not gonna touch on that tonight. I feel like I've spent quite a bit of time on that area. Tonight I'll focus on the second focus area, and that has to do with quality education, with an emphasis on improving the way we differentiate instruction for kids. I will want, I do wanna say one thing about focus area one. Tomorrow afternoon, we will be meeting, we being members of the board who were on the first focus area strategic planning committee, Maureen Rexer, who is the dean of restorative practices at the middle school, Kim Crane, who is Maureen's counterpart at Bartle, several principals, and I will be meeting with Dr. Anne Gregory, who has been working with us as a consultant in the area of restorative practices. We will be looking at two models recommended by Dr. Gregory, IIRP, and the Morningside Center for Social Responsibility. By the end of tomorrow's meeting, it is my objective to come away with having identified which of the two programs we're actually going to implement, starting hopefully in January on a pilot level and then fully next year. But that's all I'm gonna touch on for now regarding the first focus area. So, the second focus area, like I said, has to do with differentiating instruction, providing kids more learning opportunities, also improving the quality of academic instruction. So tonight I'm gonna touch on the four goals that are framed by that second focus area. And the first is our work towards being sure that we are providing as much choice in the area of instructional programs to our kids as possible. One of our action steps, and all the action steps, incidentally, are listed at the top. This action step called for us to survey our kids to determine from their perspective if we are actually offering enough variety in our instructional programs. And the results are there for ya. It does appear that the majority of our students feel like we do provide enough activities. Doesn't mean the leadership team and faculty are going to put this idea to rest. We're still offering more programs when they come to our attention. But these are programs that are, remember, focused on using the after-school time that we have available to us. So those are the clubs we facilitate at the middle high school, and then some of the new things we're doing at Bartle, including robotics club, Run for Fun, and whatnot. So this is the progress we've made so far in the action step that had us surveying the kids. The other thing that we are tasked to do to address this goal, to offer more diverse programming to our kids, is to look at ways we can alter the way we provide physical education to our kids. You know, the traditional model that most of us are accustomed to had us learning the new organized athletic activities, taking part in personal wellness activities, but there's now a push towards looking at such things as meditation, what is referred to as mindfulness. That seems, that's the new trend. Seems to be the term being used across the country. In fact, in this Thursday's Taylor Notes to the board, I will be sharing with you a wonderful article and a video from a school in California that, at the elementary level, has kids taking part in daily meditation. So we're looking to incorporate such things into our program, and we've, we have found, low and behold, shouldn't be shocking to anybody, a resource at Rutgers that might help us in incorporating mindfulness into the PE program. The second of four goals that fall under the second focus area has us doing a better job differentiating instruction. By that I mean adapting the way we teach kids so we address their individual learning needs and also their individual learning styles, not just needs but styles. Some kids learn better by doing, some kids learn better by listening, by seeing. One of the first things the leadership team was tasked to do in the strategic plan was to review how our teachers planned their lessons. We feel it's important to start with the planning phase when it comes to what's actually going to happen in the classroom. If teachers don't know well enough how to plan to differentiate instruction, well, we're not gonna see it in the classroom. And this, unto itself, is a whole area of professional support that we need to provide our kids, how to plan effectively. So, right now, the middle school is going to be the first of our four schools piloting a new lesson plan template that we would like to roll out across all four schools. We do not have a standard way to plan lessons in all of our schools. And we're not, the leadership team is not suggesting there should be one specific standardized way that an Irving teacher should plan, just as a high school teacher plans. But we do want there to be some non-negotiable, some things that everybody must focus on, like how they're going to use the data they get from assessments that they incorporate to adapt their lessons to meet the individual needs of kids. What essential questions are teachers planning to ask their kids that give the kids some guidance as to what the big, what the big idea is going to be for a particular lesson or a series of lessons that might be framed into a unit. So the middle school will be the first school to pilot this template. The leadership team shared with the DAC, that's the District Evaluation Advisory Committee made up of teachers and members of the leadership team, the lesson plan template. So we, we're getting their input, and we're going to come back to the DAC with what we think is a, is a next good draft. The third of four goals I want to discuss is how the district is going to be supporting teachers with more professional development and higher quality professional development than we have in the past. And in this area, one of our action steps called for members of the team to go to other school districts to see what they're doing, school districts that we, that we know are recognized for best practices in the area. And so far, these are the school districts we visited, South Brunswick, North Brunswick, and most recently, West Windsor. We met with curriculum directors, professional development coordinators. In most cases, at least in the case of South Brunswick and West Windsor, our meetings were with the assistant superintendents for instruction. Those are large districts, and they have assistant superintendents responsible for different areas. We're finding, incidentally, that we're not too far off. Like other districts, thanks to Mrs. Napp's great work, we are offering a really wide array of professional development workshops in an academy model, an academy style. We have a booklet of many workshops, mostly offered by our own staff, who are teachers are, that our teachers are required to take part in. By contract, our teachers must participate in five hours of professional development outside of the four days we offer them and the PLC work we do after school. The other action step had us looking at how we can do a better job through the observation and evaluation process, providing teachers constructive feedback. And we have the, the great advantage now of working with two content area specialists in Dr. Nikozia and Ms. Ackley, who had been conducting all of the first and second-year teacher observations, first round observations, so that they can provide clinical feedback, and I'll explain what I mean by that in a second, to those teachers before the principals and, and me and the director of special ed, Susie Budine, go in and, and really focus more on accountability and a little less on feedback, on constructive feedback, even though that's a big part of what we're doing. We're really looking mostly for the potential for our teachers to step up and meet the expectations that we're laying out for them in the, in the Danielson model, the teacher evaluation model. So by clinical feedback, I'm referring to the, the process that the supervisors engage in, that has them first having pre-observation conferences with teachers to discuss what the lessons are going to be, to collaboratively develop goals for improvement so that when the supervisor comes into an observation, the data that's being collected, the observation data, can look as much on what we have to focus on regarding the, the four domains that you see here on the left, as the goal that the teacher and the supervisor mutually identify. So for instance, if Mrs. Ackley walks, Ms. Ackley walks in and, and the teacher at the pre-observation conference says, "Hey, Ms. Ackley, I'm struggling with my guided reading groups. I, I need a better way to engage those kids who are, who are operating at a lower developmental level. Can you come in and watch me do a guided reading activity? And besides giving me feedback in these areas, focus specifically on how you see me working with the kids in the guided reading group." And so, at the pre-observation conference, Ms. Ackley will take notes, come away with this mission that she collects data, observation data when she observes a teacher, not just on the four domains, but also on, in this, in this example, the guided reading groups. And then the observation takes place, and then the post-observation takes place. And the, the whole idea is that the supervisors put the teachers at ease, knowing that this is all about getting constructive feedback with which they can grow. And my phone keeps going back to the last slide. The last goal that I want to touch on is how we're making sure that we align all our curricula to the Common Core state standards or the New Jersey state standards, how we're doing it methodically so that there is continuity from one grade to another. I talked about scaffolding a while back, the need for us to have a clear, clearly articulated K-12 program so that kids in any content area can build from prior knowledge. We also need to make sure that our kids are moving from one grade to the next with a common language about what they're learning in mind. Everyday math does that in a very structured fashion, whether we like the language that comes out of everyday math or not. It is something that the kids recognize commonly from one grade to the next, K-5. But we're struggling in the area of language arts because we aren't, we don't use, or we, and we really shouldn't be using a text-based, a textbook-based program. And I'm very glad that Ms. Ackley's vision is aligned with mine, and that is that we move away from a textbook crutch, and we promote a true balanced literacy framework that has us incorporating mini-lessons, independent work that might happen in literacy centers, and of course, the guided reading component. One of the big pushes that you're gonna be learning more about when it comes to the curriculum revision cycle is in the area of K-5 language arts and our efforts to incorporate the Teachers College Writing Workshop and Reading Workshop across the board. Right now, we have the writing workshop in place at the lower grades. We wanna bring a reading workshop into the fold. And at Bartle, it's really a hodgepodge, because somewhere along the line over the last several years, we didn't, from the central level, central office level, central administration level, drive home the need for everybody to be on the same playing field when it came to TC writing and TC reading. And so what Ms. Ackley and I need to now do is rebuild that program so across the board, we are Teachers College Writing Workshop and Reading Workshop District. So that's a, that, that's probably what's going to compel us to tweak this revision cycle so that English language K-5 is, is bumped up a step. This is this year's cycle, but you see that K-5 language arts is a couple of years away from redesign. We, we think we need to accelerate this process, so there might be some movement of this cycle. And that's my report about the state of the strategic plan. Any questions?
Looks like no.
Okay. I've left you speechless.
You have.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we will move on to committee reports, first with curriculum and instruction. Michelle?
Yes. We had a pretty focused meeting in that there weren't many topics that we discussed. We just talked in depth about a few. So, we talked about the tech plan budget, and we decided to hold off at first because we were missing Rob, who was late from work, I guess, with his travel. So, you know, Rob was very invested in the tech plan and the budget. So, we held off on that, and then we decided to talk about the field trip request and the WISE program. And those were quick topics, and then we moved back to the tech plan. So, the site visits are already being discussed so that our administration and others can, can visit neighboring schools to see how they've implemented their tech plans. And the idea is to visit neighboring schools that have a one-to-one computer-to-student ratio, to see how they've arranged that and how that plays out in the classroom. Whether or not that's most suitable for Highland Park or even, you know, feasible is still being discussed. And I'm assuming that we have lots to, you know, say here at the table. So, I'll move on to the next bullet point here. It's that district goal two, every student will have access to technology during the school day and for home use, is going to be kind of the root of all of our tech plans so that we make sure that students have access to technology during the school day and at home. That could mean lots of different things. That could mean the one-to-one ratio, that could mean that students have a smart board in the classroom, it could mean that they have, you know, touchscreen technology in the younger grades, you know, pre-literacy. And it could mean, you know, many, many different things. So, Brian Humphrey, our tech services manager, feels that we need some infrastructure improvements before we can, you know, move on towards, towards a one-to-one. So that's something that we're discussing. And there's also a tech consultant that is being brought in at the end of December to give us an audit of our current tech infrastructure, and then to help us make a list of what would need to happen to update our system and to strengthen, strengthen our system. So we still have a lot of discussion to be had, but in terms of need, there was some discussion of which direction Highland Park's schools should turn. So, our, I always, sorry, I always screw up per title. It's not science and tech, it's math and science supervisor. She, Dr. Nikozia, she provided the board with a model for technology integration, and I have copies for everyone here. And it's the SAMR model. And SAMR stands for substitution, augmentation, modification, and redefinition. In this model, technology can be used in four different ways, in those four ways, SAMR, to either enhance or transform student learning. So, once you get the handout, you can see it's illustrated, and it shows that there's different ways to use technology so that you can actually transform the environment in which you're learning. So it enables you to go to places where you wouldn't necessarily have the ability to go. And one example that Dr. Nikozia gave us in the meeting, that I didn't write on the curriculum report, was speaking to students in different countries or around the United States. So a classroom can have a conversation with another classroom, and that can be used in different, in different ways. So that was, you know, a very simple way of explaining a pretty complex idea. And she actually spoke about the Bloom's taxonomy being similar, a similar chart or model. So this is Bloom's taxonomy for technology. So, both Ruth and I, as I said in the curriculum report, had some concerns or questions or, you know, maybe just perspectives that caused concern about the one-to-one plan. You know, there's a, I guess, a different perspective, being a former educator, right? And also having kids that have special needs and kids that are not lacking for screen time, you know, at home, in, in many different ways. So, I think as parents and as educators, we both had similar concerns about the amount of screen time, the actual implementation of the technology in the classroom, and the way that it might disturb social functioning. You know, there's kind of the art of conversation that we're concerned might be, might be lacking or suffering if the kids are focused on screens. So, there's a lot of questions that we had about the way that it would be implemented, what it would look like in the classroom, how the kids would react to it. And it was just a little too much for us to get into at the meeting, but I think we both expressed some concerns. And, you know, we're, we're open to discussion, obviously, but there is kind of a choice that was discussed at the meeting, where we would have computers available to students from K to 12 at first, that would be able to travel home with them. And then we would kind of, that would be the first tier of the plan. And then the second tier would be to provide more one-to-one situations for the lower grades, so that we wouldn't be buying all this technology in bulk. And the rollout plan, as I said in the report, it would be 375 computers purchased for the middle school, 600 computers purchased for the high school, and five tablets per K through five classroom. Sorry, I didn't do the math on that to figure out how much that was, but...
I did it.
More or less a thousand, just doing it in my head.
Right. You mentioned that, yeah. So, it's a big investment, and it is something that I think, you know, would probably necessitate a lot of conversation and research. I know that Dr. Nikozia was open to questions of any kind, so I think that we all should feel free to, you know, put together questions for her. And that's about it for the tech plan. We discussed one field trip that's being held off until further notice. That was a little bit on the expensive side, so there was some question about that. But that's it for my report.
And can you just quickly take us, I know there's not much on the agenda, but just take us through the little bit that's on the agenda?
Sure. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, yeah, the first is my report that we just went through, and the resolution is number two for the field trip requests. And number three is a resolution to approve the following graduate student placements for ESL, Physical Education, and Ed Services.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. So we'll move on, I'm sorry, does anybody have any questions for Michelle?
Well, I wanted to say a few words about this one-to-one proposal. So I do have to say that this is almost the first...
Is your mic close to you?
Oh, sure. I did want to say this is almost the first I had heard about it, and I perhaps missed it in the, in the strategic plan, but it concerns me greatly. The first thing is that we've, we've noted a large number of failures around the country with one-to-one computer-to-student, including students taking computers home. That includes an article which I can send to everyone, I think I sent to some folks about Hoboken, New Jersey, where the computers that they bought for hundreds of thousands of dollars are sitting on floors. They just didn't get it implemented. It's a complex technical project. Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, spent a billion with a B dollars on a computer technology one-to-one program. Those computers aren't being used anymore. Now they're trying to figure out what next set of computers to buy and how to implement it better. We're not Los Angeles, but we are closer to Hoboken, and those are only two stories. There's many, many, many more. And I can go on. I sent an email to a few of you on the committee, and to Darcy, and to Scott and Linda, about my... my thoughts. I'm very concerned about the cost and the complexity and I'm also concerned about the sense that this is a foregone conclusion, that we've made a decision to do one-to-one and that, and that's what kind of it sounds like to me and...
I don't think that's...
Is that not the case?
Sorry to interrupt.
There's something in finance, there's something in finance which I can read to you, which concerns me a lot, which has to do with, um, the, the money that's going to be spent for an initial consultation. And that was presented as a discussion on how to go, um, with a consultant, how to go to one-to-one as opposed to how to look at different alternatives, which is all I'm really proposing. Um, I, I think that there's one-to-one, meaning over three or four years, which is what I read, we would buy a whole lot of computers, over a thousand computers. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. We'd buy a thousand computers over some years. We certainly would hire new staff. We would certainly have more, have to have more infrastructure. The complexity of a project like this probably doubles or triples the cost of what we think initially. Uh, we don't have lots of extra money and we're a small district. Um, and I'm very, very concerned about it being jumped into with two feet without a lot of thought. That, that's all I'm saying. Um, there are lots of alternatives. Some districts, uh, uh, in the area are doing not one-to-one, but students in the high school are taking machines home. Other districts have computer labs. If we're concerned about bringing everyone to this equal level, maybe we need an after-school program where kids who don't have access to computers at home get a, a, a Schedule B kind of position, uh, a, a teacher of technology, teaching those kids with computer labs. There's lots of alternatives, but I'm, I'm telling you, I have a lot of experience with complex computer, um, uh, projects, uh, this size and bigger. And I'm very, very concerned when I hear about that, a thousand computers, even if it's over several years, more staff, more infrastructure. It really is a way to burn money. Um, I made a joke, um, in my little note. I go back a long way with computers and I'm really in favor of them. I talk about it so much, my eight-year-old granddaughter says to people, "My, my, my, my grandpa invented the computer." And then she laughs because she knows better. But I was there a long time ago. I'm in favor of them, I'm in favor of us using them, but we have to do it thoughtfully and carefully. That's really all I think. And, and Scott, this is, this is for you. We, we, we need to walk before we run. And I don't want to think one-to-one is a foregone conclusion. Maybe it is in some amount of time, but not now. So, thank you, thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mark. Yes, thank you, Mark.
I would say I...
I agree with both of your concerns, Michelle and Mark. I do think, I mean, I, for one, right now, not having thought about it a huge amount, would certainly be willing to support expenditures to have kids bring computers home. I mean, I know in the high school and in the middle school, homework is given on computers, that requires access to a computer. So surely, certainly for equity purposes, we need to bring that up to speed so students without computers are not borrowing a friend's phone or trying to get to the library before it closes at five o'clock. But in terms of a one-to-one, a full one-to-one during the school day program, I, yes, my concerns are the same.
I also have concerns, um, as a equity committee, uh, from an equity perspective, because just giving a student a computer does not necessarily give them access to the internet.
That's right.
Not everybody has Wi-Fi at home.
That's right.
And so if you have a computer, yeah, you can use it during the school day at school. You can take it, you could use it at the library if they don't, if they... But the internet at the library is not great here in Highland Park. And, um, you know, you, unless the town goes to, and I know they've looked into it, unless the town goes to a, some sort of a Wi-Fi that can be accessed communally, um, a one-to-one, one-to-one system still isn't equitable because...
That's right.
Those, those kids don't necessarily have any internet access.
Sharice, if I could interrupt, I, I'm sorry, I, I read a study today when I was looking at this, um, in a district comparable to Highland Park, more than 10% of the kids took the computer home, more than 10%, and didn't have access to internet. So, they took it home and maybe they could write a paper on it, but they couldn't do anything more than that. So, it, it's definitely an issue.
I'd love to hear the progress that we've made on New Jersey ON. I think that was a, a project that was something we were looking into. Um, I agree, Sharice, that, you know, just giving a kid a computer is not really going to help. I think as an intermediate step, though, if we are committed to having computer-requiring homework in the middle school and the high school, you know, having kids have a computer to take home is a first step. Now, whether we need to be committed to that, you know, I don't know.
I mean, of course, there are certainly areas where they can work offline...
Right.
...on, on different papers and, and things like that, or even projects if they're already in, in the works and saved. Um, you know, but I just think that we need to, when we're looking at this, like, understanding that we have a 39% free and reduced lunch rate, um, and that there, there are families that will not have that access, that we have to consider that in terms of how we develop our technology plan.
Well, that's a good point. I know that my, um, my son in middle school is in the more advanced math class and the teacher regularly assigns, uh, flipped classroom kind of work, so the kids, uh, will watch lectures at home. And, you know, my son enjoys this, but we have a computer and internet. Um, and right now, that's causing a big problem. If you happen to be in that class and you are on the 39%, you know, there's a fair chance you're not going to be able to do that. So, you know, that needs to be fixed one way or the other. I, I am not in favor of a one-to-one program during the school day, particularly for kids in Bardell and Irving, but we do need to work on a way to make this more equitable.
Do you want to put some kind of frame on this, Scott?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I mean, I think we could, we could all kind of...
I'll just take and get it all in.
...be prophetic about this for a while. I mean, and, you know, I can say that when this first came across my computer screen, I had all the same concerns and I've expressed all the same concerns to Scott, um, that it, I felt like the cart was kind of being put before the horse where there were consultants being brought in and site visits being brought, and wow, wait, hold on. You know, so Michelle, you mentioned that this was part of the strategic plan. I was at every strategic planning meeting, I was at every strategic planning committee meeting, but this wasn't discussed. Like, we had our community together, we had our teachers together, we had students there. There was a lot of discussion about equity, there was a lot of discussion about professional development. It didn't include community members clamoring for a one-to-one program. So, I'm, I'm very hesitant to launch into this after the effect when, you know, we had that opportunity with our entire community together to discuss this, to gauge our community's receptivity since they're the ones who are going to be paying for it. And we didn't take advantage of that. So, I think to do it now is, is, is a bit problematic.
So, first of all, know my position on this, one-to-one. We'll just focus on that and then we'll talk about technology. I've been in the business for twenty-something, twenty-three or twenty-four years, uh, and it wa, I was not a fan of one-to-one. I read the reports you did out in little LA, what they buy every kid an iPad or an Apple computer.
Yeah, iPad.
And we don't know much about that since, you know, about the, the, any positive impact it had. It wasn't until I actually visited the Hillsborough one-to-one program that, um, and this was normally three or four years ago, I think I was my first year as superintendent at Cantorworth, that I actually saw the positive impact of a one-to-one, like, what it could actually do to transform instruction, not, not kind of accessibility what we're giving the kids, but how it could actually transform instruction. Now, that being said, um, go to, what, three, four months ago, Dr. Nikozia comes on board. She has been involved in one-to-ones, albeit in districts with different demographics than ours. And she was very excited, came to me with the idea and, um, it made sense to me. I take responsibility, however, for going a little too fast with this, the, the, even proposing the site visits. That being said, the board should know that I would never come to the, to the table with a hundred thousand dollar price tag of some kind just for laptops without having properly vetted and spoken to the board about what our, uh, plans are. But I do also know that there's a, that there is a fine line between the instructional decisions that the administration has to make along with the faculty and the decisions the board has to make. In this case, a lot of the impetus for the one-to-one was coming from teachers as well as Dr. Nikozia, and I was supporting it. Uh, however, I guess what I'm trying to do is realize that I need to take a step back, know that, um, if I, if we're going to go forward with our instructional ideas, we have, we need to buy in at the board, to buy in of the community, um, and we also need the approval to make purchases if we have to make purchases. And that's going to mean we have to slow the train down, um, scale back to site visits, which we're going to do. I'm only going to be taking, um, two teachers and I'll explain why in a second. You're going to get a recommendation for that next week. And, um, Dr. Nikozia and myself to the, to Hillsborough on the fourteenth. And, um, and reframe this discussion so it's not about one-to-one, but rather it's about how we are not integrating technology effectively in our, in our classrooms across the board. We are in a couple of classrooms here and there. Mr. Maladnik's doing great work with Google Classroom. Ms. Fittipaldi is doing some good stuff. I, I can't tell you exactly what, that at Irving, but I know she has a full set of computers for her kids. So, those folks do need support and we need to replicate what they're doing. So, I, I think I need to do a couple of things. One, slow, slow down the process of investigating a potential one-to-one initiative. And two, reframe the discussion so it's not just about one-to-one, but it's about integrating technology, which is why, let me go back to the, the recommendation I'm going to make to the board that I have two teachers go on the fourteenth to Hillsborough. We, we still have a need to see best practices for technology integration. Forget the one-to-one at this point. Our site visit is going to mostly focus on how they're using technology in their classrooms. And that's why I want Mr. Maladnik and Ms. Fittipaldi to come along with us. They're actually equipped with enough computers for all of their kids in their classrooms and, and they haven't gotten the support they need. So, that's why they'll be coming with us to Hillsborough. Mr. Krieger?
I, I, I simply don't even know, um, and I'm further removed from the school system than just about any other board member in terms of, 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 of kids in the schools here. I'd just like to know what technology we do have in the classrooms. I mean, I know, I know that we order equipment, I know that we, you know, finance, put in hundreds of, of Chromebooks. I know that we have, uh, you know, internet access. I, I don't know how those machines and that, those resources are currently being used. So, if I were thinking about a consultant or our own staff, I would be thinking about a report to the board and the superintendent on what do we have now and how is it being used? And what are some of the alternatives for a stepwise increment, incremental, um, uh, move towards much better use of technology? And that's what got me so upset and I, I admit I was upset about the one-to-one because I don't even know what we have. That would be just a wonderful thing for us to know if we're, especially if we're going to spend money. Uh, what do we have, how is it being used in the classroom now? And that would get us started.
Could I, could I speak to that?
Sure.
Um, so, in the high school, we have a few Chromebook carts and I would say that we actually use these Chromebooks quite often. So, uh, in Google Classroom, I have, I think, eight classrooms for either different classes or, um, different clubs. And oftentimes, my teachers assign, um, assignments or post extra notes or information onto these Google classrooms for us to check when we're at home or so that we can turn in assignments on time. Um, and also sometimes when we're in class and we're doing research in class, um, the teachers will call the main office, uh, ask to see if they have a Chromebook cart and then if they do, they send the Chromebook cart up. Um, and I think the, the system we have, um, I know that sometimes, uh, not every teacher is able to get a Chromebook cart because, um, it seems that we don't have enough for every single classroom, but right now, it seems that they're, uh, scheduling it pretty effectively. Like, usually when I'm in a class and we need the Chromebook cart, we're able to get one. Um, so recently, in my international relations class, we were doing a mock trial on different, um, international court of justice issues. And for like two or three days, um, we were able to get the Chromebook cart and you just take it out of the cart and then in the class, like, you're doing research on the computer. So, it's, it's really nice to have there. Um, we also have the media center, which is open, um, and it has several computers there as well as a computer lab. And then we have Mr. Harper's room, which has a computer lab. Um, and then we have a few, uh, compute, like, three computers at, um, in guidance that people can use. Um, and we have a couple of, uh, we have a lot of like printers in the high school, too, that, like, kids go to and they need to print out their assignments and things like that. So, we currently have all of these things. I would say that the biggest issue right now with technology, um, in the high school, from, from my perspective and from students, um, like me, it's, it's not so much that we don't have enough computers or Chromebooks, per se. It's just that, um, the Chromebooks are computers that, like, really, really need Wi-Fi and sometimes our Wi-Fi is not fast enough. And so, we often, like, when we're setting up the Chromebooks and things like that, we'll spend like the first five minutes of class just waiting for the Wi-Fi to start up because we have these computers that, you know, function only if there is Wi-Fi and if it's not ready, then we can't really do anything. And so, sometimes the classroom, you know, sort of comes to a lull because we're waiting on the computers to start up. And sometimes, um, if a, if a student... I think that, um, some of the teachers try to provide alternatives to students that they know might not be able to have these technical, logical resources at home. So, they do accept some written work, uh, in response to like assignments and things like that. But I have noticed, um, more and more that more teachers are requiring that you have your assignments typed and printed out or at least emailed to them. Um, and so, when we're talking about this issue from an equity standpoint, I can definitely see like where we're coming from if, you know, your teachers are demanding that, um, you have everything typed and things like that. But from my experience, um, if you just talk to the teacher beforehand and you make sure that they understand your situation, they're usually pretty leni, uh, they're, they're usually pretty, um, understanding and lenient about it. But yeah, I, I agree that this is an equity issue. I just, I also agree that I, I don't know if providing a computer to every single person is the best way to solve it.
I would say that I've been very critical of the technology plan in the district for a very long time. Our strategic plan does talk about researching one-to-one technology plans to see what they could offer in the district.
But that was added after the fact. It was added after the fact.
Oh, it was?
Yes.
I, I would say that researching one-to-one technology versus adopting it are two different things. I don't really have any sort of reservation with looking at it, seeing what it could offer to the district and then also looking at, uh, what's proposed in the finance committee in terms of someone coming in to look at what can be done to increase the bandwidth. I remember when we looked at and bid out increasing the bandwidth for the school that when we came back with the results, he said, "Well, here's your response to the bid, but we can't offer you that speed anymore because we don't offer something that's slow." So, we're actually, here's our bid, but the, what you're going to get is actually a lot higher than what you asked for because that's what we give now. You know, but we, there's no way for us to distribute, if I understand it correctly, to the entire school area because we just don't have the, the technology throughout the school to actually get that bandwidth there. That's why you sit waiting for the Wi-Fi connection in the classroom. So, I think there's a lot of steps that we have to take to get anywhere with that sort of plan.
Exactly.
And, and I, I'm, I'm comfortable with researching it and looking at the cost because a, as we move forward, a lot of the things that we're looking at, the costs, uh, come down. And the ability to adopt it is a lot easier than it was a few years ago. I think, you know, you talk about like the, uh, was it the Hoboken article was probably only about three to five years ago? You know, where they had all those computers, but, you know, they, when they, the computers that they had bought, purchased then were a lot more expensive than the Chromebooks. They had a lot more, the type of computer they were, it was a lot more involved and I don't think that the schools actually had the ability for every single student to turn their computer on and connect to the Wi-Fi all at the same time. So, I, I think what's, what this right now is just looking at it rather than purchasing.
Right. If, if I could just, and very briefly, I'm, I'm very much with you. I'm not scared of finding out information, doing the research, analyzing. I think that moving along in a measured fashion, as Mark suggests, is, is important. And I also know that sitting on the finance committee with, with the budget coming up, that, um, you know, I don't, I don't think that a, a thousand computer purchase is going to be coming through and getting approved this year, so, I mean, it's just, you know...
Well, it's not about this year, it's about a three or four-year plan, but there's the, there's the people infrastructure that concerns me so much to manage in three years out, a thousand or fifteen hundred machines. That's where Hoboken, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's where Hoboken fell down. It wasn't the computers, it was actually people and infrastructure to manage all those computers that fell apart. And, and, you know, the machine that goes home that gets broken and how do you log that in and how do you upgrade machines and who keeps track that the software... And who keeps track that the software is up to date on all the machines? And it becomes a serious, a serious, complex problem when you're talking about numbers like that. And we are a very small district.
Right. But our kids are also, many of them are going to be going on to college, and we want them in high school in particular to be prepared and ready once they set foot on campus to have been using technology and be prepared to do all that work.
I feel a lot better having heard what Michelle has to say. They're there. They're there. They're using them. They're using Google Classroom. They're, you know, that internet. And could it always be better? I'm sure it could always be better. But I mean, I think we're all relatively on the same page. Things moved a little bit too quickly. We've now kind of put the brakes on things a little bit. We're not against, obviously, a couple of site visits here or there for a couple of teachers and a couple of admin to go. But my biggest concern was, we had a strategic plan. We have initiatives set for the next three years. This would be a massive undertaking. We have other massive things to undertake. And we, as a community, all agreed on those things. And I think we need to move forward with, you know, the most urgency with those issues. And then if this is something that's slowly being investigated over time, so be it. But we had things that did come to us from the community, like later start times, things like that, where I haven't heard an update about that in a while. So, you know, there were other things that would be big lifts that seemed to have fallen off of the radar, and then all of a sudden, this showed up on the radar. And I think it kind of took everybody by surprise.
I'd like to say one thing about that. First of all, we're only suggesting we research one-to-one programs for technology. That doesn't take much more than conducting site visits or reading literature. We're not talking about actually implementing this stateful hog. So I don't think it's a very invasive action step. Second of all, the strategic plan is a living document. And I recognize that we need to be as transparent as possible. That's why this thing is live. When you link to our strategic plan focus areas on the website, you see everything as it's happening, live.
But it may be important, then, if something like this is added, for there to be a notation added, you know, like that this was added after the fact. Because this isn't just a fleshing out of an idea that was there. This is a whole new addition.
It's not the only action step we've added. So any act, I'll have to go back and look at the revision.
Something of that breadth that would require hundreds of thousands of dollars of, I mean, this isn't just, you know, a small program or like, this is a massive district initiative.
I think what I will do, however, is make a note, maybe I'll highlight and have some kind of a key that signifies every new action step we've added. We must have added at least one handful of action steps across all four focus areas. So I'll do that next. And I do, I'm sorry, one last thing. I do, in response to Mark's suggestion, which I think is a good one, have plans for, maybe in January, if I could fit it in, to have Brian Humphrey and/or Christina Nikozia come to the board to make a, do a state-of-the-technology presentation to the board.
That would be wonderful. Wonderful.
That'd be great. Also, Scott, if I could ask, with the action steps, as things do change as they are added or as we evolve, the dates that things are changed should be very obvious to people?
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thanks.
If I could just say one thing before we move on. My like testimony about the classroom environment and like the resources that we already do have, that's strictly my own, and it may be more similar to students who have a more similar class set and like home environment to me. But like, at home, I have a computer and like I'm pretty, I can generally print things out pretty easily, and I have pretty fast Wi-Fi, and like it's easy for me to do all of these things. So I really can't speak to, you know, those students who may not necessarily have those things. And so just because, like I'm saying that, oh, like I already have the resources I need, it doesn't necessarily mean that, like, I wouldn't say that that's the general student opinion, per se. And I'm very sure that there are students out there who would be in favor of being able to take technology home or being able to have some form of Wi-Fi from the school at home. So just one last thing.
I mean, I have to, I mean, I have to say, I think that's actually somewhat of an urgent need, that students who are being given homework that's best completed on a computer, be given a computer to take home. I mean, it sends a message that, especially like at the middle school where, you know, in this higher-level math class, there are sort of computer requirements, that, you know, you're not really welcome in the class if this is hard for you. I'm sure a sixth grader could go to the teacher and say, I'm sorry, I don't have a computer. Could I stay after school? You know, but that's difficult. I mean, I think we need to either stop assigning homework that really needs to be done on the computer, or else make sure people have a computer to take home and that we get New Jersey on, running, so that there's Wi-Fi available.
Or portable, some sort of portable Wi-Fi or something.
Right, or portable Wi-Fi or something like that. I mean, Sherees is right. It doesn't help too much to have a Chromebook at home if you can't get it online. So that's a real inequity that we face right now. But that would be significantly less of an expenditure than a one-to-one.
I totally agree. And when we talk about an achievement gap in our schools, and that those who are least equipped perhaps to, you know, be taking the step forward and moving up, may have the least access to whether it's Wi-Fi, well, first of all, the computer, but second of all, the Wi-Fi. But nonetheless, to me, is part of that plan.
And to that end, something that I ask Scott to look into is, you know, it's all great to go to Hillsboro or West Windsor and look at their one-to-one. We are not Hillsboro or West Windsor. We have a much different demographic makeup. We have a much different socioeconomic makeup. To look at other districts like us. And if we're going to look at these kind of programs, are there any programs in districts that look more like us that have made anything like this even close to feasible? Because with our budget, it's very hard to see how this would even be a reality. So that's one of my concerns.
Speaking to the concern that Scott mentioned about like the fine line between, you know, advice that we get from the administration about curriculum and then like the board's role, I kind of find that like the site visits are, they were a further concern for me because they were all, first of all, you know, Darcy mentioned that they were all larger, had more money, different demographics, but also that they were all public schools. So I know for sure that there are many, many private schools of all different kinds that also have tight budgets and other issues that we deal with in the public schools. But they might have some sort of technology plan that would offer us some sort of perspective. You know, I do think that technology is important, but I think that there's also, from the community's perspective perhaps, some understanding that technology is just blanket positive experience. Like there's this understanding. So I think that, you know, there needs to be a little bit more discussion about that for parents and guardians, just to understand why the technology is necessary, what is it used for. Like in our little Blooms taxonomy illustration that Dr. Nikozia gave us, I mean, it's one thing for an administrator to look at that and understand clearly what that means, right? And how that looks in the classroom. So the illustration shows like this little man in a submarine. Thanks to the submarine technology, he can go underwater, and he can breathe, and he can go explore the deep seas. You know, what does that translate to in a second-grade classroom? You know, how does my Chromebook provide me some sort of alternative environment? So, you know, I just think that there's a lot of questions, and I do really appreciate hearing that all the board members do have concerns and that we're all going to look at the research. Because it's not about, you know, it's not a binary issue. Is it good? Is it bad? Do we need it? Do we not need it? You know, it's a subtle conversation that we're having. So I'm really glad that we're all kind of taking a step back and kind of trying to answer those questions. And yeah, I mean, there's a fine line between the work of the board and the work of the community. But I do think that we all need to kind of understand a lot, it sounds like, before we move forward.
All right. So with that, unless anybody has anything urgent?
Less than urgent, but anything that Nick Bryan would need to report to you, too, when he does come before the board, is I know a lot of the Chromebooks are cyclical in nature in terms of their longevity and their license. So I'd be interested to know, in addition to the inventory, where we're at in each of those Chromebook sites.
Yes.
So we can assess when we might be looking at additional Chromebook licenses.
And this will help us, obviously, moving straight into budget in February. Okay. So with that, I am going to move on to finance and facilities with Mark.
Okay. So we met at six o'clock this evening. We discussed briefly a few items in addition to the items on the agenda, which I'll talk about in a moment. One of them is that our administration met with the Shade Tree Commission last week to discuss the next steps with regard to the removal and replanting of trees at the high school. These are the two dead trees at the high school. A communication is going to go out to the residents to notify them that we need to remove the trees, which will take place right before the winter break. Dr. Taylor's working on a letter, which will go out. And then there'll be a planting probably around April, early April, in conjunction, in April, in conjunction with Earth Day activities as a community event. So that's one item we talked about. One item we didn't, but which is on our report from Linda, is the work done by the Tempco staff to remove the old bleachers, 6,000 pounds of steel and aluminum. And the vast majority of this work took place three weeks ago. With special thanks to Michael Donnell and Angelo Melendez from Tempco for their work in getting this stuff removed. And, well, we even sold it and recovered $600. Yeah, yes. Dr. Taylor and Scott and Linda met with the demographer to get started on November 18th to begin starting the process of demographic study, so we know what's coming forward in the community in terms of students. And we've got our usual reports, the report on the expenses and revenues and the current student demographics, which didn't change much from last month. And also the charter school expenses, which we're not quite up to date with, but it looks like we may be kind of one student above what we budgeted, so we're very close. As far as the bill, as far as the list, items one through seven, so two is the bill lists, the general athletic cafeteria bills. Item three is the travel and related expense reimbursement reports. Item four is the contractor who'll do the professional services around our computer study. And the words that I have associated with that, which I'd like to read into the minutes, which will be technology system evaluation and consulting assessment of current infrastructure, review of technology inventory, and discuss current curriculum and technology integration to put together an evaluation and recommendations. And I'm going to stop there. It's an awful lot for four hours. I hope that this group works with our staff, with Brian and others on the staff, and also with the folks in the classrooms who are doing, using the computer courts, the computer for curriculum, and so on. I don't know if there's more money going to be proposed in this area, but certainly to get started with four hours of work seems completely reasonable to me. And to the committee. We are going to accept three grants from the HPEF. And thank you, I'll say that again next week. Grants to Michelle DiMarco for projecting the future in art at Irving. Nicole Stahl at Bortle, life skills through Legos, which is excellent. And Craig Gervin at the high school on the National September 11th Memorial and Museum Visit. There's also, I was just at the September 11th Memorial, and it was really quite an experience. And then there's a budgeted Resolution 7 for Tempco to install 17 thermostats at Bortle, and that is budgeted. So that'll be voted on next week as well.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mark. Does anybody have any questions for Mark? I do have a quick, is there a reason, a stated reason that you know of, Scott, that we need the outside consultant to come in and do this as opposed to just having our technology person?
I pointed out in our meeting that there's a concern that we did throw a lot of money into infrastructure several years ago. That's what I've been told. And yet we're having infrastructure problems. This is an individual who Dr. Nikozia has worked with in the past, who she trusts, can give us an outside perspective on what we did right and what we did wrong, and what we might still need to do. Because regardless of whether we do it one-to-one or not, we need to fix the Wi-Fi and other infrastructure issues. So that's why we're bringing somebody from outside.
Yeah, because I think in many respects, it's kind of been a Band-Aid approach. When something breaks, we've been fixing it, and we've been approaching it from, you know, like the worst component that's out there is the next thing that we fix. And I think this assessment is more structured upon the idea, this is what you have existing, and this is the direction you can take it to go and have it done in a much more cost-effective manner, based on the direction that technology is going, based on how it was presented in the meeting. I'm very comfortable with the idea of having an outside set of eyes to take a look at how the district overall is planning to move forward.
Okay, great.
I agree with that. I would also add, I'm particularly interested, we spent a fortune, what was it, three years ago, on technology, and that was beyond a Band-Aid. That was a big expenditure. I would be interested in hearing what this group has to say about, you know, how well that money was spent.
I'll incorporate the results into the presentation we make in January or February.
Sounds great. Okay.
Oh, I just had a real quick question. What's our timeline on getting the demographic study completed?
It's a great question. We are asking for it to be done by mid-January. So it coincides with our budget development, and the demographer thinks he can get it done by then. With that anticipated presentation to the board in February, you want some time to put all that data together.
Because I understand there is a piece to the Sustainable Schools, Jersey Sustainable Schools program. It's like the next level of the Sustainable Schools process, that you are required to submit a demographic study done within the last three years to, as part of the qualification for it. And it has to do with, part of it has to do with building equity, equity programs within your schools as part of the sustainability. So I have to look at that again and see, look at the timeline for the Sustainable Schools.
Even though the leadership team will have the data to use in the budget planning process in mid-January, late-January, I assume that mid-February is when it's going to go public. By that time, you could put it together in a formal packet and do a presentation to the board.
Okay. Okay, great. So if no one has any other questions for Mark, then we'll move on to personnel with Judy.
Okay. We had our personnel committee. Pretty straightforward. Just to give you an update, today, we interviewed six candidates for the maternity leave replacement for Ms. Brady. And so we're getting close to a decision with that. We have some nice-looking candidates. So maybe by next meeting, I think, we might have a recommendation for the board?
Okay.
And then I'll just go over the agenda items. Let's see. So we have some, another maternity leave, well, somebody that's out on maternity leave, going to be out a little bit longer, Ms. Martin, so we're going to continue with that replacement. Teacher will be staying on. Item number three, we need to make an adjustment for the after-school program assistance. The salary should say 1075 an hour, not 1625. Let's see. Yeah. We have some resignations of after-school advisors and global awareness. Cheerleading and dance team advisor is stepping down. Then seven, eight, and nine are all resolutions to approve administrative assistant secretaries. So that's all listed there. Resignation of an academic coach. A resolution to approve a baseball coach for the middle school, and a head baseball coach for the high school. And we have some people going out on medical, family medical leave and disability.
I'll have the salary information for the assistant administrative secretaries on the next board agenda.
Does anybody have any questions for Judy? No? Okay. So seeing as there is none, we'll move on to policy with Ann.
Great, thank you. I'll
I'll start with our, the minutes from our meeting. We met on November 21st. It was, the policy committee has as members, I'm the chair, and there's a member from each of the four committees. Four committees, I feel like I've gotten that wrong. No, four committees. So we always have to have somebody stay home so we don't have a quorum. And that lucky person was Ms. Byer this time.
It's a very hard decision to me.
Well, you know, we plan to rotate that, that assignment among the members. See, most of what we discussed are the policies I'm about to direct your attention to. There are a few other items. We talked a little bit about power school issues and the administration, Dr. Taylor in particular, emphasizing with staff the need to keep power school updated in a prompt fashion so that parents and students can keep an eye on how the student is doing as the year goes on, so there are no surprises. Let me see. Let me now turn to the policies. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one other thing. Dr. Taylor prepared a new organizational chart, which as you all know, our current, our formerly current organizational chart was quite anachronistic. I see here that I mistakenly said I attached those to the policy meeting minutes, which I forgot to do. So I will try to forward that around to the rest of you guys, or Dr. Taylor can. Okay, on to the policies. All right, 2310, student grouping. We had, of course, quite a lot of discussion about this. This involves, among other things, how students are placed in classes. So of course, involves all kinds of equity issues. The biggest change is down at the bottom of page one, where it says grades nine through 12. So the committee wants to recommend to the board this change, which would have placement in honors and AP courses be based on a set of objective criteria to be spelled out in a regulation by the administration. Those would include, the criteria would include quantifiable things like class grades, benchmark assessment scores, and transcript records in the case of transfer students. We also, we did want to leave in a role for teacher recommendations. When the teacher recommendation is to move a child up to a higher level than he would otherwise be qualified for. So it says a teacher's recommendation that a student be placed in a higher-level course shall also be considered. And the point of this was to make sure, first of all, that we had a regular published set of criteria for getting into an honors and AP class. So a student can say, okay, I need to do this well in my 10th grade math class in order to move up into the honors class. There is also a feeling, I think, shared among many community members, well, I'm sorry, it's not, it's not actually a feeling. We've been trying to work with this board toward greater integration of our upper-level classes in terms of the socioeconomic status of students, racial and ethnic diversity. So we wanted to make sure, we wanted to prevent any kind of situation in which teacher recommendations might be skewing the makeup of the honors and AP classes. Now, of course, we don't know whether that's happening, but we hope that by putting in an objective criterion for getting into those classes, there would be no issues of that sort. It would hopefully be a mostly objective process. So with that in mind, since we're doing that, I'm sorry, the next part was that we also, we want to encourage students to try for a harder class if they want to. We don't want students to feel like they're not welcome in those classes. So there is a waiver provision at the beginning, at the top of page two. So if a student wants to take an honors or AP class but did not meet the objective criteria for enrollment, the student can enroll by filling out a waiver form and having a parent or guardian sign it. My understanding, and we had, we had input from administrators on this, this was not just the board's, the board committee's recommendation. My understanding is that this reflects in part what is already happening, namely that, right. So if a student wants to waive into a class now, they can waive into a class now. But in terms of the, the non-waiving part of it, we wanted to hopefully make it a more objective process. Since there is a waiver, we took out the placement appeal process. There's really no need for a placement appeal process. If you did not meet the objective criteria, but you want to be in the class, you can waive into it, no need for an appeal. So that's what the committee is recommending in terms of policy 2310.
Can somebody explain what it means that the C regulation part, where is that going to?
That was perhaps not, not clearly worded. It was, it was our thought that we didn't want to set the objective criteria as the board, right? We wanted to have the administration and teachers set that. It's like, you know, what you need in order to get into, you know, Math 11, honors, you know, whatever it would be. We would want Scott and the teachers administration to settle, to, you know, say what the criteria would be. And maybe that shouldn't be in a regulation, maybe that should be just in handbooks. I don't know. I'm, I could go either way on that. What do you think is best, Scott, for the administration's perspective?
I can, yeah, let me, let me reach out to them and then I'll get back to the board between now and Wednesday or Thursdays before the next board meeting.
Yeah, as long as we have it before the next meeting, because, you know, I'm just kind of thinking this through, obviously, if we're going through a first reading and a second reading next week would, would be when we approve for first reading. So as long as that's done and we all agree on it for next week, then this could still go through for first reading.
Worst-case scenario.
But I don't think it could go through with just C regulation, because.
I mean, I think C, like perhaps a little bit more articulately, you know, C same-numbered regulation or C, you know, regulation number, blah, blah, blah.
I can direct.
But yeah, if you could get back to us on that, that'd be great. Maybe that's just a matter for a handbook rather than a regulation that stays the same every year. Okay, so that is policy 2310.
Could I, could I make a comment about?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah. So I started talking specifically to some CP students because of the whole five points controversy regarding like the honors and AP classes, because I wanted to get their perspective on it. And I asked them, you know, did you know that when you take an honors or an AP class, you get five points at the end of the year added on to your final grade? And a couple of them actually said, no, I had no idea. And I said, well, if you had known freshman year, would you have taken honors bio instead of CP bio or honors English instead of CP English? And a lot of this information is anecdotal because I only spoke to about like seven or eight students.
Sure.
But at least half of them said, yeah, I would have reconsidered. I definitely would have reconsidered. And so I'm thinking about this issue and talking to them. Students, I think that students in these AP classes and honors classes tend to have really involved parents that are pushing them to take these harder classes and teachers that sort of just expect them to keep going on and moving on to the next level and things like that. So, I mean, this relates back to the five points issue, but I think, I think some of it is just a lack of information being relayed to the students who perhaps need it most, where they don't know that there is this opportunity for them to move away from the CP track and actually start taking honors and AP courses. Because they, they don't get as much recruitment and they don't get as much pressure as regularly honors and AP students do. And I think that, you know, they deserve just the same amount of information and the same amount of encouragement. And so in regards to that, I don't, I don't know what we could possibly implement to, to provide more information to them, but like maybe informational assemblies or information sessions where they would be able to talk about that and like consider that. Because I really do see like a lack of information to these students and they really deserve it.
Michelle, I think it starts and ends with the guidance department, don't you? When they're scheduled, sitting down and working over the schedule with students?
Yeah, well, the guidance department, yeah, yeah, the guidance department isn't, is really in charge of the schedules. I mean, it also, it also, the teachers play a role with that, like in what they recommend you for. Like at the end of every year in high school, they usually call you up to them and they ask you, you know, what they, what class you want to be recommended for. But that's my experience, they usually say, oh, you know, you're probably going to go to this class, right? Even if you don't want to, I'm going to, like, I'm going to recommend you to this class anyway. So even like without, like that's sort of the expectation, but I can't say that that's the expectation for everyone. And when it's not, I think, you know, that really sort of hinders them. And when you're in the guidance department, my experience with picking schedules is they, they sort of like give you a paper, like maybe a week before, or probably some, a little bit longer time period for you to like look at and see what classes you want to take next year. And they do have a brief information session where they tell you, you know, you need this many years of math or this many years of English and these many credits in total to graduate high school. But there isn't, I don't really see as much talk about like whether or not you should take an honors or an AP class. And then the week after that, or however much time, when you actually go into the guidance office and you talk to your guidance counselor about what you want, in my experience, it's been pretty quick. And I just, you know, pick the classes that I want or that I've been recommended for. And I think that's because it's expected for me, but I can't say that that's the same experience for other students. And, you know, I don't know if they're encouraged necessarily to take harder classes based on, oh, last year it looks like you did really well in English, why don't you consider taking an honors English and things like that? I've heard testimonies from some of my friends where perhaps in freshman chemistry or freshman biology, you know, Ms. Stephens was saying, you know, you're doing really well in this class, why don't you switch into honors the second marking period? And perhaps they'll do that, but I don't always hear that. And the fact that there is a lack of information that, so some students don't even know that the five-point policy exists before it gets taken away, like that really surprised me. And I think that there, there's something to be addressed there.
I think that's, that just sounds incredibly crucial. And that's why we have board representatives from the school, I'm so glad that you're here, say that. I mean, really, that was my experience of guidance in high school as well. It wasn't like a long, involved conversation, you know, trying to like work out your deepest feelings and desires. I mean, I would like to see something like that, Scott. I don't know how other board members feel, where students are encouraged in some kind of a, maybe an assembly, an informational assembly, to look at the requirements for the honors and AP classes, see if they could do it. We could express some encouragement instead of what I, what I hear, again, completely anecdotally, is often the case, which is sort of like, well, you want to take this class, you know, you can't drop out after the first quarter, so you better be sure. You know, that's not encouraging. I would like to see us move toward universal provision of information, you know, proactive push, a push notification, you know, where the kids are, you're not dependent on your guidance counselor saying, hey, you know, what do you think about this? Or your teacher, you know, where kids are given the information they need proactively. And furthermore, it's, I would hope it would be done with an attitude of encouragement. I mean, we, the board seems really serious about trying to integrate our upper-level classes and this is a huge part of it. I love Scott can speak to that about whether there's somewhere we can go.
Well, that's why we mentioned during this discussion is we wanted to make sure what was actually happening at the high school was reflected in the policy. So even with this waiver form, I'm not sure all students or parents knew that if a teacher didn't recommend, recommend you, but you really wanted to try this class, you could go ahead and get, do the waiver if your, if your parents said, okay. I know a lot of kids didn't know that. So, you know, it was happening, but unless everybody has that opportunity to know, unless it's in our policy, so it's in the handbook and they could say, okay, yeah, let me try this, you know, that's the only way to really get it.
Could I ask, do you feel like the handbook that you have is, it's good, that it's readable, that it's too complic-, is it too complicated, not enough information, perfect, what? Is it something that you find?
I haven't read it.
Have you ever seen it?
Well, when we're having debates about the dress code and things like that, students will often whip out their agenda and like look through it very furiously and like point out the things about the dress code or something like that, because they're very passionate about that. But to be honest, I don't really see students like referring to the front of the handbook very often to, to look through these things. It's information that is there and I can't really speak to why, you know, we don't really look through it. I think it's just maybe because it's just so much and it's just like blocks of text and things like that.
Apparently.
Do you read your, do you read that through the board policy very often?
Before each meeting, yes.
Summer reading, Darcy.
The entire, the entire thing, of course.
But I recognize that, that there is an effort being made and like, I mean, it's, it is kind of on the students that, you know, we're not really looking through the, the student handbook and I, I don't really know why we aren't. Another thing is that I, I guess like earlier when I was talking about it, I just want to make it clear that I don't want to throw the guidance department under the bus.
No, 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 I know.
They have so many students and they're like, they're working really hard to get us into college and everything like that. So I recognize that, you know, it's hard to be on top of everyone at the same time, especially toward the end of the year when things get so busy. And I don't know if I would put all of the responsibility on the guidance department because there are also teachers that are spending so much more time with these students. So. I think, yeah, it, it goes around and it's, I think it's a more extensive issue.
I love the informational assembly idea. I think that's fantastic.
Yeah. I think that that's a wonderful idea as well. And I also wanted to ask you, Michelle, how, I mean, this is completely like your opinion, but I think that from what I understand from my high school, there's a lot of information that is passed around like word of mouth. So how you're saying that certain parents might be pushing their students to do, you know, the AP or honors classes, do you think that it's also a social issue as far as groups of students that kind of travel in packs or have different, you know, friend groups that kind of share information amongst themselves and maybe not communicate with other kids? And that's why some of those informational pieces are falling through the cracks?
So I would say that my grade is not particularly clicky, but you have a system in place where you have AP classes and then you have honor classes and then you have CP classes. And when you have students that are consistently CP and students that are consistently honors and students that are consistently AP, you have them mixing with different, like with, with sort of like the same people, like almost every single year. And so, you know, when we were looking at this whole five points controversy, I heard so much discussion from the honors and AP students who were either delighted that it was finally being taken away or were outraged that, you know, they couldn't have their five points anymore. But then I turned to the CP community and these kids didn't even know what was going on. So I wouldn't say, I don't know if it's like friend groups necessarily, but because, like it's sort of a vicious cycle. If your classrooms are not super integrated and they're not super diverse in a sense, then, you know, it keeps repeating itself. And unless you sort of, you know, take all the students and force them down in, in an assembly and tell them, you know, like, this is what you have and like this is what you can do and we really encourage you to do it. Because, I mean, it's, it's hard to get them to just read the handbook on their own. But if you get them, I guess, all into one space or you make sure like that they know in an announcement or something, or something of the sort, I don't know.
It sounds like a great thing for like a transition from middle school to high school too. And then, you know.
Yeah, it starts early on. I remember, I remember in Bartle School, when we first started introducing these more advanced classes, I was in Ms. Holcain's class and there are so many individuals from that one, like advanced math classroom that I still have so many classes with today. And from that point on, when I started, you know, interacting more and more with those students because of the classes that we had and we started on this track, like that's where we really diverted and that's where I started interacting less, even in middle school, with students that were, that would become CP in high school. Now in high school, because we have electives and because we have other requirements, like business requirements or tech requirements, that's where you start seeing this interaction more. And from certain teachers that do a lot of recruiting, especially to students that they know might not have taken the class otherwise, I see more integration. Like in my international relations class, like we have a pretty good mix of students. Like we have a lot of honors and AP students. We also have students that have been traditionally CP in the past. And I think a lot of that is due to the recruitment by the teacher. So I think it's interesting to see how early on this kind of thing starts. And I honestly don't know how you would be able to prevent that while, I guess, sort of encouraging students to be as, as scholarly as they can. But I think that, you know, there definitely is a need there. And the fact that this, that this starts so early is kind of concerning.
Well, it doesn't happen in Bartle anymore, so there's our first step.
Oh, okay, there we go.
But what you're saying kind of reinforces what I was thinking, was that it's an institutional click system that we've got there. And, you know, thank God for electives and music and the arts and other things that, you know, maybe get kids out of that track, even temporarily. But yeah, the idea that this information is not accessible is a huge issue. And I like the idea of an assembly. I don't know what else we can do, but I would love to hear more ideas about making that information accessible.
I'm a big, I, I've been talking about this for two years, three years now. And Melissa Newman, wherever she is over in Israel.
Probably still watching.
If you're watching. Melissa was a big supporter and I was a big supporter of creating standards that were the same for everybody. And having it published on the web, having parent meeting offered, having student meetings offered, and having that integrated into, you know, sort of the, the culture and the language of, of how we do things. You know, one of the great things about like rethinking our curriculum and making sure that classes are scaffold correctly and K through 12, like everything flows, is that that classes are scaffold correctly and K through 12, like, everything flows, is it gives us the opportunity to also think about the messaging that we are carrying from one level to the next, and how that can play out over time. So we're at a unique point where we can develop a new way of thinking about how do you deliver that information? What is the common language that can be used from one school to the next? To talk about transitions, and it's all, you know, transitioning from Bartle to the middle school. There was a big problem a couple of years ago with, you know, bigger gaps happening for language arts for students because the programs were, you know, not quite, they weren't synced well. You know, and we worked on that, and we're working on getting that where it needs to be. And then you've got the transition from the middle, from the, you know, middle school to the high school, which at least you're sort of in the same area, so it's not so bad. But there's a mentality and a thinking of a change. And I know that the teen center does run a freshman orientation program. So there are, now, it doesn't have great attendance in terms of the number of students that participate. Did you participate in that as a freshman?
No. I mean, okay, the teen center is wonderful, and they provide so many resources, and they have this wonderful new like animal program that Dr. Scott is, Dr. Scott Taylor is involved in, sorry. But I would say that they do really reach out to students, and they do their best to get students to attend their programs, but for some reason, like, there still is a lack of attendance. And, yeah, it is sort of troublesome because, like, I'm sure that when I was a freshman, like, it would have been really helpful for me to have gone to that, but I just didn't for some reason.
Well, that's a great, that's why you're having an assembly where it was sort of mandated during the school day, might be a fantastic, you know, one idea among many. Darcy, would it be appropriate for us to ask Scott to look into ways that we could, specific ways that we could get information out to students?
I think we kind of already have.
We already have? Okay. I don't know if we need like a specific.
I don't have any magic bullets, but I can definitely bring this up to the leadership team. It's a worthy discussion that we need to have, absolutely.
I mean, it confirms a lot of stuff that we, what you're saying, that we have read about in the media and what we've heard from students here and there, you know, that this kind of tracking gets started, and it's difficult for people to get the information they need to jump out of it. I mean, that's, that's critical to our, the first focus area of our strategic plan. So I, I hope that we can come up with some really creative ways to deal with this.
Well, I would like to say that I think recently we have had policy changes. Like, I think the requirements or prerequisites for some of the AP classes have changed. And I am noticing that, that we do have some different students in those classes, but I'm noticing more that those students tend to be younger and not necessarily of different racial or ethnic demographics. Rather, they're just, they're just younger students that are either, either they're really motivated to learn about the subject, or like, their parents are like, oh, you can do it even younger now, this is going to look great for college, there you go. So I don't know that it's, I think, you know, lessening those, I think, lessening those prerequisites is one thing, and it's definitely moving us. But I think another thing is just making sure that everyone knows.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, awesome. So let's move on to 5511.
Yep, sorry, let me just slow us down there.
No, that's okay. It's just, we're having lots of great discussions, but it's gonna end us here for a very long time.
Okay, here we are, sorry. This hopefully will be less controversial, or, you know, involve less of a discussion. So we talked about the dress code policy, which of course is always very controversial, and we sort of punted and decided we were not going to address the gender, for now, we are not going to address the widespread perception that the policy as set out in the high school handbook and as enforced has not been sort of unbiased from a gender perspective. In other words, there's a widespread feeling that, that women students, female students are, the policy is more strictly enforced with regard to female students. And whether that's, I don't think that's a problem with this particular board policy because it's pretty broad, but it's something that we all sort of talked about needing to figure out in terms of implementation. And I know Scott seemed like he was very open to that. So this policy does not address all the controversies that we've all been discussing. It's fairly boring in that sense. So we took out the gang activities paragraph. Let's see, paragraph three, we suggest, we propose that that be taken out, and we just, we added the bolded text, instead of prohibiting gang apparel, which, as you may know, encompasses a huge variety of apparel. I mean, certain colors, this, that, the other thing, it could be certain.
Can I just add a little funny anecdote here as a parent? My, my very, very computer-oriented, I'm gonna say, child went to school with a bandana and was told to take it off because of this policy.
Right, okay, so.
Let me just say, it's been ridiculous for quite a while, and I'm grateful to see it go.
Thank you.
And that certainly like opens the door to, you know, that's one avenue for subjective enforcement, certainly, if some teacher thinks a bandana is a gang sign and another teacher thinks it's not, you know, it's just.
And it has to be applied evenly and uniformly.
Right, and that's the problem.
They're right.
So.
Do we really want to allow for.
Bandanas?
Well, yeah, we encourage gang colors. No, we put in a different sentence. There's a bold, a bolded sentence that says, "The Board of Education prohibits students from wearing while on school property clothing that advertises illegal activities." If they're, I mean, so that opens the door again to uneven enforcement, however.
But it's not illegal to be in a gang.
Well, it depends what you're doing with the gang. I mean, we felt that this was not a necessary paragraph to have. I'm sorry, obviously, we felt that. Go ahead.
I don't think there's actually anything illegal to be a part of a gang, but I do have concerns about students wearing gang colors in school. So I kind of like the broadness of the wording of the paragraph more so than the highlighted sentence that was added, because I don't know that, you know, being in a gang and wearing gang colors is necessarily illegal, you know, the activities of the gang could be considered illegal. So I don't think that this statement actually hits it enough that we could then limit what the students are wearing at school property.
That's a good point. I mean, I'm probably biased in part by the fact that we don't have a major gang problem here. I know there are students here and there that get involved in gangs. I mean, how could we deal with that while also not sort of opening the door to teachers saying, oh, that red hat, or, sorry, hats not a good example, because I think they're prohibited.
I think it is a good example.
Not hats, I think hats are not allowed, so. That red t-shirt with the black stripes on it.
I mean, really, truly, you would have to basically cut out every color.
Yes.
Of the rainbow.
Right.
Because every color has been taken by some gang.
Right.
So it's a ridiculous, it's a ridiculous thing to say that we're going to prevent students from wearing colors. The other issue is that most people, when they think of the word gang, a particular image comes to mind.
Yes.
You're not thinking about a student wearing a polo shirt or a group of students who are all wearing the same exact polo shirt.
But you should be.
Who are, you know, you know.
Many times you're not thinking about white students, many times. Many times people are not thinking about white students. I mean, that is a problem with this policy is that sometimes, there's a feeling that it sometimes isn't forced in what might not be the most unbiased manner from a racial perspective, as well as from a gender perspective. And we felt that the gang paragraph encouraged that.
Right. And I don't, I don't think that we need to create school policies that target particular students or that will have staff feel that they need to watch particular students for wearing particular colors. I think that it's a bad precedent to set because people will look for problems that don't necessarily exist.
Right.
If a student comes wearing red, maybe they're really into Rutgers.
Isn't there a whole policy? There's a whole policy on gang-related activity.
There is.
So, I mean, can we just kind of maybe take a look at that one in conjunction with this one?
That's good.
Maybe we don't need that sentence, we don't need that paragraph or that sentence at all. And I would think that there may be something in that policy that would address whatever the concern is here. Because it's not like we don't have policy on gang activity. So, I mean, we're clearly not taking out this paragraph because we're like, yea, go gangs, but we want to put it where it's appropriate and there is a specific policy. So maybe, can we put that other policy on the drive for next week so we can all look at that in conjunction? And then if we still feel by looking at the gang policy that it doesn't cover what the concern is here, then we can go back to this.
Right.
That's a great idea, yep.
Like, listening to you guys and looking at this, my thought is just take it all out completely and address the gang stuff in the gang policy.
Yeah. That sounds great. I'll make sure to get that shared.
A kid in a red bandana being, you know, told to take it off because, duh.
No Ralph Lauren.
Okay.
Do you think that we need the illegal activities thing to prevent the, like, the pot shirt?
That's what I'm saying. Because I think Rob's exactly right. Being in a gang isn't an illegal activity.
No, no, right, but, but that, but applied to things that are not gangs. Do we think we want to avoid people coming in with their marijuana t-shirts and their, you know, that kind of thing? I don't really care one way or the other, but I can see a reason for it.
I think that was, if I remember correctly, there was some discussion about like advertising alcohol or advertising.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if you want to leave it in for that.
Drugs or things like that.
That's what we said, yes.
That's what the illegal activity was supposed to represent.
We would leave it in for purely illegal activities.
Sounds good. All right, so for next week, we'll add the other, the gang.
Yes, I'll put that on the, on the drive, or, or, share it with everybody.
Perfect.
Okay, shall I move on to the next policy?
Yes, unless anybody has anything else, nope.
Okay, all right. Let's see, grading system 2624. This is just a linguistic change, the last sentence, it says, "A pupil classified as disabled will be graded in accordance with his or her individual education plan or the section 504 plan." Instead of referring to a pupil classified as disabled, we just put a pupil with an IEP or a section 504 plan. We felt that was more respectful. That's all that is.
And are we going to do that as a first reading next week or a second reading, since it's only a wording change, not a?
I think it's going to be a first reading. I think we do, I think we agreed to the contrary, but then it got put on the.
It's fine.
I'm sorry about that. I was not as organized as I could have been about forwarding information about these policies.
It's probably easier to, too, to just do them in batches.
Do them together, okay. And as far as I'm aware, there's no, nothing that stops us from having a third reading if we need to continue discussing the policy.
Absolutely.
Nothing sets, nothing sets with deadline.
Yeah, absolutely. You know what, I want, I'm sorry to go back to the dress code briefly. If we go back to 5511, I, hopefully this will not be too controversial. It's paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, where it says, "Staff members shall demonstrate by example and precept wholesome attitudes toward." So it was suggested by a number of people that we get rid of the wholesome attitudes, that we felt that that was sort of a, a kind of moralizing that was not necessary.
Yeah.
And in the various revisions of the policy, I neglected to, actually, I think I did, but somehow it got left out. We would like to delete and precept, and precept wholesome attitudes. So it would just read, "Staff members shall demonstrate by example," oops, toward, we'd also, I'm sorry, toward would also be out. "Staff members shall demonstrate by example neatness, cleanliness, cleanliness, propriety, all right, modesty and good sense in attire and appearance." I'd be happy to leave some of that out, too.
I hate the whole thing.
Just get rid of the whole thing.
The whole thing should go.
Yeah, should we just do that? Is there any?
I mean, that's, it's like inherent in the professionalism of the job.
Being a teacher, right. You're gonna come in and you're.
And that needs to be addressed. I don't think we have a policy.
It should go, it should go.
Okay.
None of us should be here.
All right, so I, I propose that we, that when we consider this for first reading next week, we just delete the paragraph about staff members.
Wholesome attitudes.
Yeah, wholesome attitudes is really something else.
No, these are professionals. Like, this is, this is humiliating, that whole idea of having to tell them what to wear and how to wear.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good point, very good point. All right, moving.
The second paragraph of that one, I'm sorry, it's just a typo.
Yes.
Second paragraph, third line down, or present, it's supposed to be prevent.
Yes, it is. Excellent catch. All right.
You got that, or is Linda getting that?
I can make the change and pass it to Linda. Linda has it?
Linda's on it.
You got it?
Yeah, I wrote it down.
Okay, I mean, if you wanted me to do it, I could give it to you or something, but.
Well, Susan O'Doto is the one who's doing this, right?
Yeah.
I'll give it to her.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, quickly, last but not least, because this is very important to the district, new policy 8504 regarding safe routes to school. This is a policy that was proposed, I believe, by one of the sustainability, one of the, I'm not sure who exactly, one of our green teams or sustained, one aspect of our sustainability apparatus. It basically expresses the school's support for active transportation, biking, walking, skateboarding, et cetera, over cars, though of course it recognizes that cars are also It, let's see, what else does it say here? You guys can read it. It's mostly just an expression of our, our preference for physical activity without actually limiting anybody's ability to come to school in their gigantic Hummer limousine if they want to. Let's see. We took out, as you'll see at the top of page three, there was a, I think the policy came with a proposal regarding public transportation. We proposed that that be not included in our new policy because we don't have any. You know, if we ever have public transportation within Highland Park, we can add it back in. And that was it on that policy. And that concludes the four policies for your consideration.
You, can I, you mentioned before the organizational chart, and then Scott, you and I had a little discussion about, I think it was 1110, is that?
It is, and we found, Susan realized that we have to actually approve that policy. So when we have that next policy meeting, we have to put it on the agenda. I was wrong. The organizational chart is actually placed on the web for all to see. So we're preparing that for the next meeting.
Okay, I didn't realize that it was part of the policy.
I guess we could put it on the next agenda if you want.
Just put it on the next agenda. I think it'd be fine, yeah.
I'll do that.
Yeah, okay, wonderful. All right, so if anybody doesn't have, no one has any other questions, we'll move on to public comment. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation, is reserved this time for Keith's comments.
I have one from a student that's not here.
Oh.
We have a student who's not here.
That's great. All righty.
But I can do that after.
No, no, go ahead. No, I mean, you always can go after nine, you're free to go on every, so if you want to just.
Okay. His name is Alexander Saaf. He lives on Amherst Street, and he goes to the high school. He's a senior, and he wants to know why there's no more white bread in the cafeteria. He's been, he's been asking me this for three weeks now. And he, he really, he really wants, he's very passionate about his bread, and he really wants an answer.
So, are you on that?
Sure.
We're on it.
The federal nutritional standards require whole grains, and white bread just doesn't have any, enough. It doesn't meet the nutritional standards. I'll just make it simple and concise. It doesn't meet the standards.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, thank you.
Sorry, Alexander.
Okay, so we will move on to our board liaison reports. And Scott, did you, said there was going to be something from Joshua Chen, right?
I have it right here. You want me to share it with you, or?
Sure, I can just.
Can you read off it?
Read it in if you want. So it's from the Borough of Highland Park Municipal Alliance Meeting Agenda. There was a meeting on Tuesday, November 15th. Let's see, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at this for the first time. They did a budget review. Boy, have you looked at this? Maybe I'll let you do this if you've looked at it.
So, all right, so the Municipal Alliance is looking at its budget, and it's thinking about limiting the refreshments it provides to kids when they do the activities, also reflecting on t-shirt purchases, and wanting to use the money they might save on those things to spend more on programming and educational materials. And then they talked about the second quarterly activity reports, which are going to be due January 6th. And looks like January 6th is going to be a big meeting, when they'll be talking about all the activities that they did in the first quarter. And I think I will also ask Josh to come up with a Google Doc and share that with us instead, okay?
Wonderful. All right, thanks. So Michelle, anything to report from the Borough, the Public Information Committee or HPTV?
Public Information didn't meet, the meeting was postponed until later this month. And as far as I know, there was no HPTV meeting.
Okay. And Scott, you're still doing like monthly interviews?
Interviews with Gary Leslie, yep.
Right. Do we, so they put those up obviously on HPTV, does he give you access to them, to like cataloged on our website, or, I mean, that might be cool.
He does. They're also on, they're Facebooked out as well, but would you like us to stream them on our site?
Yeah, sure, why not? Seems like we might as well, right?
Definitely. Where'd you recommend I put them on the site?
Under the superintendent's tab.
Yeah, that's right. Well, but it might not always be Scott.
Maybe we can have a Highland Park Videos link, Chris and I'll talk about it, where, you know, where we have our Highland Park Board of Ed meetings.
Yeah, I'm sure you guys will find a good place to put them.
Have another section. I will email Gary now.
All right. Let's see, HPEF, Rob, Magaziner.
Yeah, there was no, there's no meeting since the last, since our last meeting, but they, the HPEF did put forth, and Mark described the three additional grants that, that had been approved and sent over, so those are great. Those are one each for the Irving, Bartle, and the High School. I think that, I guess the Pancake Breakfast with the Exotic Animal Show was, which I went to, which was fantastic, as it was last year, too, so there were more than 100 people there, and yeah, it was a really great turnout. And, you know, I think a good time was had by all. I was actually able to bring my daughter Allison to that event. She never had anything like that when she attended, so, you know.
Was she excited?
Yeah, she was pleased, but no, that was great, and so, yeah, that's it, HPEF.
Wonderful. So, thank you, Rob. Judy, do you have anything for us from the Commission for Universal Access?
No, they could not get a quorum, so they did not meet this month.
Okay. And Michelle, Public Library, is there any?
I believe they're actually meeting tonight.
Dear.
Right, so, oh, so I should bring this up. So Scott and I just talked quickly about Scott picking a official rep to serve on the board, because he's able to do that as a superintendent, to have someone replace him as a voting member, so he's working on that. And then I guess that would be, we wouldn't need a liaison if we have a rep.
I have two people in mind, I reached out to one, haven't heard back, so I got my backup and waiting in the wings.
So, just to clarify, so Judy is a librarian herself, and through her work at her library, she kind of realized that this is actually like, it's statewide regulation, right? That any borough or any town's library should have a representative from the Board of Education who's actually a voting member of the board, not just a liaison, but a voting member.
Yeah, libraries have boards of trustees like schools do.
Right.
And, you know, like they have a mayor appointment, they have a superintendent appointment, and for them to get a quorum, if they don't have that representation, it makes it more difficult.
Right, and for us to have a liaison has been very tricky, because they very often meet the same Monday nights of the month that we meet, so it's not working, so if we, if Scott has, you know, a appointee, then we actually have a voting member on the board, which is pretty cool.
And I just would like to, you know, asterisk that and say that I, as the liaison, I'm the first liaison as far as I know from this current board, and I was not informed in any way that I was a voting member the entire time that I've been at these meetings. So thank you, Judy, for enlightening us.
They don't know, they don't know.
They don't know.
They don't know. My wife is a voting member appointed by the mayor, and she didn't know.
I can send her.
She didn't know.
I'm sure that the board members did not know.
They didn't know.
Yeah.
She's a board member there, they didn't know.
Well, we all know now.
Now we know.
Now we know.
Thank you.
Okay, so shared services, I think we actually, do we have a meeting coming up with Gail? We have something coming up, I think.
Wednesday, Wednesday morning.
Yay, all right. So maybe I'll have something for the, the next meeting.
At 9:00 AM, yeah. I'll invite you.
9:00 AM, okay. And, let's see, negotiations.
Yes.
Mark, you do it.
So we've met, we met several times with the Highland Park Administrators Association, and we have a contract, a four-year contract with that group that we've settled on. So I wanted to thank Mr. Lassiter, and also Mrs. Osemier and Knapp, got that right, and Knapp, for their work with us. It was very excellent meetings, and the, and the outcome is, I would say, good for all parties. And I'm looking forward to be working with Keith after the winter break and having the same excellent outcome.
Yay.
Good stuff, good stuff.
All right, wonderful, thanks, Mark. So Ruth, do you have anything for us from CPAC?
Yes, we met on November 21st, talked about a number of things, including a holiday party, which is being sponsored by...
Universal Access.
Universal Access, yes, thank you very much.
Thanks, Judy.
And that is December 18th, from 12:00 to 3:00 at the Senior Center. So we are really hoping that children of folks who have, children who are out of district will be able to come to that meeting. That leads to, one of the issues that came up is that as a district, we are not so adept at communicating with our students and families once they do leave the district. So that's something that we'd like to work on, that Tara was going to talk to Suzie about. Also, this is sort of not really a special ed issue, but, and I guess an access slash language issue that came up. We have a number of parents who happen to be, English is not their first language, and they also have students who have special needs, and they have a very difficult time communicating with the district, which is an impediment to meeting those students' needs, as you can imagine. So we were trying to, you know, problem solve and think a little bit out of the box how we could do that, other than calling a friend who happens to speak Russian to, you know, go to this one's IEP meeting, you know, we felt that it was sort of something that the district needed to take on a little bit more than they on right now, so.
There must be interpretation, interpreter service, what's the right word there?
Interpreter services.
Interpreter services that are available for, I mean, obviously for a fee, but...
Yeah, we, I used to do in Kennelworth, we would hire people who we knew who could interpret, and so it's something, could you send me an email to reflect that?
Yeah.
Requesting that I can talk to Suzie Budine about that.
Sure.
Great. That was it, Ruth?
That's it.
Yep, thank you. So Sharice, our parents and students of color?
Okay, we, let's see. Had a great anniversary dinner on the 16th of November, which was lovely. Theoretically, we have a meeting for November, sorry, December the 8th, but we are still seeking space to meet. We hope to have it at 6:30, maybe, maybe, since we don't have a meeting space right HP Parents and Students of Color is encouraging parents to attend the responsive classroom workshop and dinner at Irving School on December the 13th at 6:00 PM. And, yeah, it's going to be from 6:00 PM, which will start registration time, and that will go through the evening, 8:00 in the evening. So we're encouraging parents to participate in that event, which is being run by the schools. Other than that, there is a, the Live Mentorship, Ashton Burrell's Third Annual Live Mentorship Holiday Charity Basketball Game, Space Jam Edition. They will have special...
Is Fox going to be there?
Special guest celebrity appearances.
Oh, my.
Free giveaways, and a halftime, halftime half-court shot contest. That's going to be on Thursday, December 22nd. Doors will open at 6:45. The admission fee is one or more cans of food, which will go to the food pantry. Tipoff will be at 7:15, and that's going to be happening at the Bartle School, Elementary School Gym at 435 Mansfield Street. So we hope people will come out and have fun.
Sounds great.
Sharice, I have a note to get back to you about the requests regarding HP Posac becoming affiliated with the district, but you can reach out to me if you'd like to consider using one of our spaces, as we thought you might want to do.
I will let Anna know.
That's, delegate.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I don't run the organization anymore, so I, I mean, I officially stepped down when I joined the board, and so it, the, the organization is basically run by Anna Perre, Catherine Burton, and Letitia Cataldi, are they're doing the main work there, so. But thank you, and I will let them know.
Okay, thank you. As the liaison.
As the liaison.
Okay, so we're going to say "zone" at the end.
Okay, so that brings us to Ann for Human Relations.
Great, I think I'm getting, developing your throat problem, Mark. You seem to be losing your voice over time.
Too much talk.
Yeah, maybe that's it. I'll keep my mouth shut after this. Okay, so we met on November 16th. There are two events of relevance to the school. I will actually email you about these, Scott, since I see you're leaving, and also because it'd be sort of more directly of getting to you. The Martin Luther King Day event is being planned, that's something that's sponsored by the Human Relations Commission. It will be on Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January 16th. I believe that it's going to be at the high school auditorium again, so I will be speaking to Scott about what the school can do to, if he hasn't already spoken with the commission and the mayor, about how the school can support the event, aside from providing space, and also about advertising. I think last year, the commission might not have been as organized as they could have been about requesting that Scott advertised throughout the school community, and we certainly want to do that this year. The other event that's coming up of interest to students and community members is a Unity Sing, which I believe happened last year. I did not attend it, I don't know much about it. I think the Borough is putting it together, and the commission is involved, late March 2017, so you'll be hearing more about that as the date approaches.
Great.
That's all I got.
Wonderful, thank you. Ann, so, Mark, Board of Health?
Board of Health is meeting this Thursday, so I'll be, I'll be there, yes.
And for me, the Delegate to New Jersey School Boards, the Delegate Assembly is this Saturday, much to my relief, I had a panic on like Friday night, like, is it tomorrow? And then luckily it wasn't, because I wasn't going to be able to go, but it is this coming Saturday, so I will be able to be there. And so I'll be reporting out on that on next Monday. And Rob, do you have anything for Middlesex County School Boards?
No, I don't think there's anything new since your last report from their last meeting.
Okay.
And then I don't think their next meeting is until May of next year.
May, good grief.
Yeah, at least there's nothing published until May of next year, as yet.
All right, hopefully there'll be something in between. Okay, so that brings me to my president's report, and I realize that this was put onto the drive, but, you know, folks may not have had, may not have found it, it's in the other folder, is a resolution that was actually written by the, a member of the Bloomfield Board of Education, and it's going to be introduced there this month as well, but he and I were kind of collaborating on it to some extent, and so I adapted it for us to adopt as well, and then, you know, we would hope to do the same thing with this one, as was done with the last one, you know, we tried to stop the, you know, help the state Board of Education not adopt this really bad policy, but they did nonetheless, so we're going to try again. So, did anyone get a chance to take a, I mean, it's essentially the same as the, the resolution last time, so I'll just kind of draw your attention to it now, I'll read it into the record, just so everybody at home knows what we're talking about, and then we can discuss it more next week if anybody has any questions or concerns. So it's the resolution of the Highland Park Board of Education in support of the New Jersey Legislature's concurrent resolution in reference to the graduation requirement, requirements, regulations, Education Law Center lawsuit, and S2147 slash A389, I'm sorry, 3849, so that's a Senate bill, 214 Senate 7, and a companion bill in the Assembly, A3, A3849, having problems with numbers for some reason now. So it says, "Whereas the state law requiring a graduation test originally passed in 1979 explicitly requires an 11th grade test that assesses state standards in English language arts and math, whereas instead the State Board of Education has designated the Park ELA 10, a 10th grade exam, and the Park Algebra 1 test, which is given across a wide range of middle and high school grades, as the primary high school graduation tests, and whereas the new rules undermine important protections established by the legislature, such as eliminating retesting opportunities required by the graduation statute, and whereas the designation of a 10th grade graduation test deprives English language learners, ELLs, of an extra year to develop their language ability, and whereas the use of fee-based tests like the SAT and ACT as substitute competency tests through 2020 will restrict low-income students' access to diplomas, and whereas the substitute assessments are also not 11th grade tests and the Department of Education has acknowledged are not aligned with state standards, and whereas because New Jersey's at-risk students are more likely to be members of racial minority groups or ELLs, the use of fee-based assessments will have a negative disparate impact on these group, on these student groups, a violation of their civil rights, and whereas under the new rules, the substitute assessments will be eliminated after 2020, and students who do not pass Park ELA 10 and Algebra 1 will have only one other option to graduate, the New Jersey Department of Education's time-consuming portfolio appeals process. Furthermore, access to the portfolio appeal will be restricted to students who took all Park exams during their high school years. And whereas the concurrent resolution introduced by Senator, State Senator Nia Gill, in the New Jersey State Senate and State Assemblywoman Miley J.C., in the New Jersey State Assembly embodies the finding of the legislature that the State Board of Education's regulations to revise the assessments required for students to demonstrate graduation proficiency, adopted on August 3rd, 2016, and published in the New Jersey Register on September 6th, 2016, are not consistent with the intent of the legislature. And whereas the State Board of Education will have 30 days from the date of transmittal of the concurrent resolution to amend or withdraw the regulations, or the legislature may, by passage of another concurrent resolution, exercise its authority under the Constitution to invalidate the regulations. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Highland Park Board of Education hereby, one, urges the New Jersey Legislature to pass the concurrent resolution, and two, supports the lawsuit presented by the Education Law Center and the American Civil Liberties Union of New Jersey, challenging the use of the Park Test as a graduation requirement, and which asks the court to invalidate the new graduation rules based on their multiple violations of the state's constitutions, the state constitution's education clause, state education laws, and state anti-dim, anti-discrimination laws. And three, supports Senate Bill 2, S2147, sponsored by Nia Gill, and Assembly Bill A3849, sponsored by Miley J.C., which stipulate that during the 2015-16 through 2019-2020 school years, the transition period to the new statewide assessment system, the department may not use standardized test scores to determine a student's eligibility for high school graduation. The commissioner may continue to designate appropriate tests to be administered to meet federal and state accountability measures, including the meeting of the requirements of the Every Student Succeeds Act, but the results may not be used to make graduation determinations for individual students, and supports the evident efforts of education leaders in the New Jersey Legislature who support public schools and public education. So, these two concurrent resolutions, so far I haven't heard a whole heck of a lot about them, but we're hoping that by, by putting these resolutions out there, and then the last clause that'd be further is to like, you know, notify everybody and their brother that this is, you know, the, the opinion of the, the Board of Education. And the hopes is that if we get these to more senators around the state, they will actually do something about this. But the problem is, as it always has been in the Senate, we can very often get bills through the Assembly, but then when it comes to the Senate, they hit Steve Sweeney's desk and they stop. He doesn't even put them to, to the floor for a vote. So that's where the pressure is going to have to be applied, if anything is going to be, happen here, and now, of course, with our new political climate, everything is kind of a little bit, exploded a little bit, so, you know, we will, we will see if we can get people's attention to this, but, you know, we don't have a chance of getting people's attention to it if we don't talk about it. So that's kind of the point of the, the resolution, is just to get it on, just to get it on people's radar. So if everybody wants to take a look at that before next week, we can have further discussion about it, unless anybody has anything, any thoughts now?
No, I just wanted to say that, you know, concerning our current political climate, you know, New Jersey has an upcoming gubernatorial race, so, you know, I, I think that it's not a good idea to not talk about it, it's actually the Congress, like, we need to talk about it more than ever, because we actually have a chance of having a governor who's going to be listening and receptive and active, you know, so I have a lot of hope that we will have a progressive, open-minded governor.
There you go. So we, this didn't make it onto the, onto the agenda, I thought it was going to make it onto the agenda, but I did want to, Sharice, give you a chance to speak to the statement that the, the district released, speaking of our current political climate?
Yes, so, I guess shortly after we...
Oh, actually, you know what, we had it under New Business, I thought it was going to be under my president's report. Why don't we, if you mind, don't mind, we'll just leave it there.
Oh, that's fine.
I just noticed, that's why, I thought it was going to be on, but it was on later, so I'm sorry, that's my mistake. Do you mind, we'll just do it there?
Not at all.
Okay, all right, so then I just have one more quick thing, well, not quick, sorry, that I wanted to do under my president's report, I'll send a few of these this way, a few this way, and this isn't on the agenda, because I only found out about it on Friday. On Friday, I reached out to the superintendent in East Brunswick, because December 1st was the deadline for any charter schools to submit expansion plans, and of course, I got the response that I was not hoping to get, which is that Hatikva has once again asked to expand. expand. So this, he was, Dr. Valesky was kind enough to send me the, send me the expansion plan, so you have that in front of you, you know, you can cruise it a little bit, and we can talk about it a little bit in more detail next week, but, you know, as we've done in the past, you know, we will certainly respond to this in some way. The, the thing that's new here, it's pretty much the same request that they've made the last couple of years, that's been denied, which is to add an additional class of 25 students per grade, which, now that they're a K through 8 school, because their middle school expansion was approved back in 2014, would add, 25 seats in grades, K to 8, would add another 225 students, you know, they are now, we've been making the case repeatedly that there is no demand for the expansion, because they are only approved to serve East Brunswick, and they're clearly not drawing very many students from East Brunswick anymore, as evidenced by the fact that they're serving now like 26 or some odd districts, but they're now actually using that as their case, why no one should be able to object to their expansion, because they are pulling from so many districts, that this isn't going to have a significant enough impact on any of those districts for them to care, which, ah, I find absolutely staggering, like, the hubris behind that statement, that somehow administrators and board members to a charter school feel they are entitled to make decisions about the tax dollars that we are accountable to our public for, and they're tailing the state that we should have no right to object to the diversion of funds, because they don't think it's very much. So, so I encourage everyone to give this a thorough read, and experience the range of emotions that I've experienced in the last few days reading it, and, and then we can have, we can have further discussion, but rest assured, I've, I've spoken to administrators and board members in other districts who feel very similarly to how I feel, and we will be doing our best to work on a coordinated response with other impacted districts, and any community members out there who are concerned about this issue, I know there are lots of folks who have, who have supported the district in, in the efforts to, to deal with this issue over the years, please reach out to us, and we are, we could use all the help we could, we could get. These decisions are typically made by the end of February, so it's a pretty quick turnaround on these expansion requests, so we don't have a lot of time to make our opposition known, so we need to do whatever we can as quickly as we can. So we will talk about more, this about more, as, as the weeks progress, but I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, and to bring it to the public's attention. So if nobody has any questions about that, immediately, then we'll move on to old business. Does anybody have anything?
I, I just wanted to say thank you for this, before we move on to old business. I think we're extraordinarily lucky to have you in Highland Park.
Thank you, that's very kind of you.
You're our double door, Darcy.
I mean, the amazing thing is here is, it does impact our budget, but we don't even have to be told.
It's incredible.
Like, we have to do the legwork to find out that this is even happening, and if I wasn't as, you know, keyed into this as I am, and, you know, Dr. Valesky wasn't, you know, kind enough to share it, and we hadn't developed, you know...
Yeah, I just, I just find it incredible, every single time this happens, that it is so difficult to get information about it actually happening.
Right, and we do, I mean, we have community members who come, rightly so, and we talk about $5,000 expenditures and $10,000 expenditures, and we can spend hours and days at this board table, you know, discussing those kinds of items, and here's hundreds of thousands of dollars that leaves our budget, and apparently, according to the, the good folks at Hattikva, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be worried about that. So I, I just find that utterly staggering. So, as I said, I am sure we will have more discussion about this as, as the weeks progress. So if nobody has anything in particular for old business, we'll move to new business, and I'm sorry, Sharice, now we'll read that statement.
Absolutely. So, following the election, many different outlets began to track the incidents of bullying and aggression that were occurring, and, and there were very high levels happening in schools across the country that were being reported, not, not just K through 12, but K through higher ed. And many of our schools, community schools in New Jersey began to write letters to their communities, reassuring the members of those communities about their commitment to serving all of the students, and we felt that it was important. Darcy had presented us with a letter that had been written by Princeton, and we determined that we wanted to do the same, and Scott pulled in Keith Presti from the HPEA, and, and also representatives from the HPAA, and so we did produce a, a joint statement together, and it reads as follows. It was sent out, by the way, to all, everyone that receives electronic paperless mail in the district did receive this, and it was posted to our Facebook and to our website. Highland Park Public Schools recommits to providing safe spaces for learning for all students. The Highland Park Board of Education, the Highland Park Administrators Association, and the Highland Park Education Association pledge our commitment to fostering a school environment that is unified and inclusive. We value the diverse backgrounds and experiences of our students, families, and staff. Our diversity has long been a feature that has attracted people to our borough, demonstrated by the 43 languages spoken in the Highland Park School community. We believe that this is an important time to acknowledge that members of our community may be feeling particularly vulnerable, anxious, and concerned. This year, we've made a commitment to moving forward from acceptance to diverse, acceptance of, I'm sorry, let me do that again. This year, we have made a commitment to moving forward from acceptance of diverse perspectives to building equity and support systems for all students in our schools. Evidence of this commitment is the set of goals and action steps in our strategic plan, and the Board of Education's goals for the 2016-17 school year. The first of these goals states that the district will ensure the inclusion and support of students of all abilities, races, cultures, religions, belief systems, sexual orientations, gender, gender identities, and socioeconomic backgrounds. We are concerned about reports from the Southern Poverty Law Center that more than 400, at the time of the writing of this, more than 400 hateful intimidation and harassment incidents across the United States were reported in the days after the presidential election. Highland Park schools stand firmly against these acts of bias. We assure our community members that we will do our part to meet the goals stated in our strategic plan. We will leverage resources such as the teen center, restorative practices, and social-emotional skill building in all of our classrooms. Bias has absolutely no place in Highland Park. School personnel are on high alert for any intentional acts of conduct, speech, or expression that target individuals and groups. Such conflicts damage relationships, not just between individuals, but among all of those in the broader school community. Victims of any act of hate will be provided the support needed to recover from the damaging effects of such acts. Individuals who victimize others will be referred to appropriate school administrators who are charged with reviewing disciplinary cases. Students will also be counseled by school professionals who are trained and experienced in the area of cultural sensitivity. The focus of counseling sessions will be on building self-awareness and understanding the origin of these behaviors and the impact they have on individuals. In every instance, we will work to restore a positive supportive learning environment for every member of our school community. Highland Park is a very special community, it has served as a safe haven for those who welcome the differences people bring to our society. Our town is enhanced by the diversity of our citizens, and will be served by the solidarity its school district has for the protection of our collective values.
Wonderful, thank you, Sharice.
Thank you.
And I feel like, when this was shared, you know, on our social media, it was one of those things that started kind of like flying around with all those like wonderful, I love my town kind of statements, so I, I just, I love it when we, when we see that, and when we, you know, put out a product, especially one that's from the board, and the teachers' union, and the administrators' union, that resonates with folks and makes them feel like proud of the place that they live, so I was, I was very excited to see that. And also, in that pesky little other folder on the drive, I don't know if everybody noticed the board calendar, on the proposed board calendar for, for next year, which we have to do now, this month, because, you know, we only do the board calendar until December, and then we have to redo it as the new board reorganizes in January. So if you go into that other folder, you will find the resolution that I read in, and then you will also find the, the board calendar. We've pretty much stuck to the same format that we've had this year, of two meetings per month, with one month, one meeting per month in the summer months of July and August, because there's, you know, with school closed, there's so much less going on. The only exception being in April, the way that the, the spring break falls this year, it makes it impossible to put two meetings back to back, so it just seems better to just do it as one meeting, and for that one month, because the schedule is kind of funny. And I think that's about it. Scott and I haven't put in as many of the recognitions and stuff as we, and not that we're not going to do them, we just haven't planned them out yet, and with the staff, so I don't know, I hope maybe we'll get a chance to do that before, before the next meeting, and I don't remember, Linda, do we actually approve the board calendar, or is it just a...
I think the board needs to adopt it.
We do need to adopt it, okay, so if everybody could make sure to take a look at that, and if there's any, you know, anything that happens to stand out to you, let us know. So that's it for that, does anybody have any questions or concerns about it for now?
Just a real quick one, which is in, so for April, since we're only gonna have the one meeting, we will not have a workshop then?
Right, exactly.
For that month, well, it'll be a voting meeting?
It'll be a voting meeting, exactly. Yep.
The May 8th date, is that the date that we officially have to adopt the budget?
I'm looking at that, I, um...
It's the public hearing, so would we, do we generally, I think we do, I think we adopted that evening as well, right?
And I remember last year, we had to move a lot of things around, based on the, the date that we had to, the last date we had to...
Right, yeah, it had to be in by a deadline.
Possibly submitted, right, right.
Yeah.
And we added, I think we added a meeting.
And we did add a meeting, yep.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, thank you, what did you do, like, three extra ones, I think?
Well, we did, we did one extra public one at the board level, and then we did, you know, a traveling show, so, you know, we'll make sure we do that again this year as well.
That's great. So then, is, is that the May 8th, the last day?
Uh, May 8th is the last date for public hearing on the budget, so we can, that'll be the public hearing. That's not to say that there won't be meetings added to talk about the budget.
Exactly, you know, so probably throughout, I mean, that, so it may be that, since we do only have the one voting meeting at the beginning of April, that at the end of April, we would have another public meeting just to discuss the budget, where people could come and ask questions, and then we still have the May 8th meeting to, so I don't know, maybe, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Scott, you know, maybe we should just build that into the calendar automatically, that we have that one voting session, and then at the end of April, we have a budget meeting, that's just...
That's a good idea.
So.
It's a good idea.
Because then we still have our two meetings, but, okay. All right, sounds good. I'll make a note of myself, for myself, for that. Okay, so if nobody has any other questions about, anybody else have any questions or comments about the calendar? Thanks for that, Rob, that's helpful. So we're back to public comment, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation, and we're, uh, nope, no, all right, nothing. So that's it, we're, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.